Claire Barber.
Here.
Chris Delphell.
Here.
David Centra.
Here.
Joe Katney.
Here.
Linda Hunter.
Yes.
Carla Newbauer.
Here.
Jose Barajas.
Here.
Jeff Crum.
Here.
Mr. Ito, you have some...
Madam Chair, if I may, I have had an opportunity to speak to both council and I apologize because of Mr. Gemma's cadence in my slowly failing hearing. I didn't get all of the answers or questions that were asked, so with the Chair's permission, Board members' permission, I believe I have the consent of both council. If I could just ask a few questions of Mr. Gemma, just for clarity's sake. Mr. Gemma, I just wanted to be clear on a couple of points. First is that you've appeared before several hundred boards.
Yes, sir.
As a planner, correct?
Yes, sir.
Not as an attorney?
No, sir, as a planner.
And have you ever put together any redevelopment plans on behalf of municipalities?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And as you're putting together redevelopment plans on behalf of municipalities, well, how many, roughly, how many have you done? How many municipalities have you...
Firstly, I've done redevelopment plans, and the closest one here in Melstix County is Carteret. And as a planner, as an attorney, and as a developer, I'm also currently litigating redevelopment plans in Melstix County.
In Carteret, when did you...
Oh, for Beacon Planning, and that was from 1996 to 2006.
Did you do the Chrome Avenue redevelopment plan there?
That was one of the Beacon Plan with Andy Jano.
What other redevelopment areas did you work on there?
In Carteret, with the Chrome, okay, it was one other one in Carteret specifically that I remember near that, but I almost remember the name.
There were some questions asked about the jurisdiction of this board. The application, as it was filed, just so I'm clear, is it your opinion that there are more, there's more than one variance, bulk variance, that's being sought here?
No, sir. I think I testified that as to the variance relief, there's the parking variance, and there's the design waiver, I think, for the width of the apartment driveway.
And do you believe that that's a variance that requires a showing?
No, sir. I believe that that's a design waiver.
Okay, and that could be granted, that doesn't specifically have to be granted by the board itself?
That's correct. The board has the power not to grant the design waiver.
And as to the parking variance, just so we're clear on that issue as well, my understanding from your testimony was that you believed that, and correct me if I'm misstating something, it was your belief that there was not enough of a showing by council or the applicant here to tie in the other projects that the applicant had worked on to...
We got, Mr. Kelso and I got into the issue of colloquial, what is similar?
Well, let me just finish the question because I'm trying to do it as a neutral party here.
I understand.
I know that sometimes when you're, you know, those words, cross-examination, necessarily gets some people's back up when they're the witness, even if they don't mean to, and I'm not suggesting that you were, I'm just trying to ask for clarity's sake here.
Sure, yes, sir.
So, the crux of the objection that you have, would it be fair to say that it is that because there wasn't enough information on those other projects that the applicant had worked on and the similarities in terms of who lived there, is that correct?
I indicated there was a few, when we talked about similarity, there were a few factors. And one of the factors is who lives there? Is it students, non-students? Another factor is how heavily traveled is that street? Is there current apartment problem here today? Another factor is how big is it? So, there are a lot of factors that go into defining similarity, and that's when Tom and I got into the colloquial of what is and is not appropriate. And I said, ask all those factors, and you add them all up, that you can't just say, well, I got a variance down the street, and therefore I should get a variance here. You have to understand the basis for what that means.
Do you believe that the board should be permitted to use its own knowledge of those areas and the people that live in those areas, just based on their own observations?
Sure. As you and I both know, the board always intended to rely upon their own knowledge and understanding of the area. That's why they're here.
There was some discussion about high-rise, low-rise, and mid-rise dwellings, and this is where I got a little lost here. Do you know specifically where in the ordinance it limits the number of units that you can have in each one of those categories?
Yes, sir. It permits the use in the various zones where mid-rise and high-rise, and that is in the R6, R7, C2A, C2B, C3B.
Could you just slow down? R6, R7?
R6, R7, C2A, C2B, C3B, and C4 zones, all permit low and mid-rise housing. And it goes on to say, and the standards for low and mid-rise housing is 16 units per acre for a low, and mid-rise at 50 units per acre. So, if you apply that standard to this property, you can only get a variance.
Mr. Ito, could I...
Yeah. Good with my...
Mr. Gemma, could you cite where you're seeing those...
I don't have these ordinance in front of me now, Glenn, but I know going through the standards of those zones when they defined it, and I don't know if it's in the table or in the language of those zones, but it's in the ordinance.
Yeah, I know it's on the box standards.
All right, it's on the box, Glenn, but like, where exactly, you've got to go through the ordinance where it's permitted, which defines the zone. It defines density. But I apologize for not having the reference.
Because the reason we're looking at the general definitions of high-rise, low-rise, and mid-rise, and there is a minimum for high-rise, for instance, per floor and the number of floors, but it doesn't say what the maximum number of units are.
I believe there is a density requirement, but again, I need a little bit of time just to check where, so I can reference it.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that question is...
Sir, I know Mr. Gemma referenced the C3B zones as one of them. There is a density requirement where it's a conditional use, but off the top of my head, I can't tell you any place in the ordinance where it's a permitted use that there is any density standard. What we do is limit density through the FAR, the floor-to-area ratio, not a specific number of units. In some of the conditional uses, I believe Mr. Gemma's correct, but not in a permitted use.
But I think, Glenn, in those zones, low and mid-rise, I don't know what zone where low and mid-rise is permitted that doesn't have a definitional standard of density. And obviously, you know, ordinance got to be aligned on plan, but I think in all those zones, it might be conditional, and all the conditional uses have a density requirement. And what I was getting at, that's the standard the city establishes for the definition of what low and mid-rise is.
Well, the point that I guess I'm a little unclear on is that the ordinance itself does have definitions of both, all three of those.
That's right.
Low, mid, and high-rise, and all three of those, would you agree, say, what the minimum number of units per floor and the maximum number of floors would be, but doesn't provide for a maximum number, for instance, for high-rise?
I have to look at the density...
That's four...
I have to look at the definitional section.
So, I'm looking at the R6 standards and the R7 standards. The R6 permits, among other things, low-rise multifamily, and there is no density standard with that. And in the R7, high-rise and mid-rise apartments are permitted, but it does not give a units per acre for that. That's not how we regulate density. We regulate that through floor-to-area ratio.
Well, then, let me ask you, as a developer, since it's clear that it's not regulated as to density based on the area of the property itself, would it be your understanding then, you'd go to the default, general definition?
No, I don't know if I could say that. I have the default...
What would you ask the board to look at then? Because this is a major question, as a board is concerned.
I would ask the board to look at how the density requirements are in other zones where it's permitted to be conditionally or otherwise, such that they can make an understanding of what was meant by low and mid-rise. The problem I have is this, there is no definition. That was what the planner indicated, it has to be low and mid-rise housing, but how do you define it? You know, we develop in New York City and the suburban areas. Well, low and mid-rise is defined a lot different depending on where you're at, and you have to look at what...
This is the high-rise, isn't it?
No.
Or the low-rise?
No.
This is the mid-rise.
This is the mid-rise.
Mid-rise is defined.
Mid-rise, but I don't think it's defined, Glenn, by the density.
It's defined by the number of stories.
Right, it's defined, but I'm saying, when you get the number of stories, the question still is how many units can you put in those stories?
We don't limit it as the number of units, we do it by floor-to-area ratio.
Glenn, all I'm looking at is what the ordinance says, how it defines it elsewhere. And that was the point I was raising.
You want to take a quick break and look through the ordinance?
I was just going to point out that if there's no, where, no place where it's a permitted use, which is what it is here, where density is controlled by the number of units, it's controlled by floor-to-area ratio.
Look, Glenn, that's why I indicated the board's got to make a determination whether this is or is not a jurisdiction issue, but it should got to look at how it's defined elsewhere. Mr. Kelso's definition of similar, we went through in parking, how it's defined in other similar locations, and of the similar locations, there is a density requirement.
Well, I would disagree.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm even more, I guess I'm more certain now, based on your testimony, what you're asking the board to consider than is that even if it's a conditional use in a zone that's, that this property does not fall under, and in the ordinance, for a conditional use, if you're saying it defines the maximum density that's permitted, and again, this, these are all a bunch of ifs here that we can't verify by looking at the ordinance, you're saying that this board should consider that?
Yes, I'm saying that this board...
Can you show us where it says that then? Because we don't have it.
Let me finish this answer, Mr. Ringwald, please. I mean, I thought that when we spoke, that this was going to, you know, and I gave my consent because I thought there were some questions of clarification.
There was.
What's happening here is dangerously approaching cross-examination. So, if, you know, let the witness answer, and, you know, if he needs more time, you know, we can come back and discuss it at the next hearing.
Mr. MacArthur, your client made a very valid point here, one that concerned not only myself, but the other professionals here, and if verifiable, I think that it does, in fact, change what I would advise the board. I'm asking him, and this is not cross-examination, he's made an assertion here that we can't verify.
And just so we're clear, I think, you're right, I'm looking at the definitional section, and the definitional section of multifamily mid-rise and multifamily low-rise does not, does not contain a density requirement. You're right. Now, Glenn indicated that we define density, you regulate density in New Brunswick, not because of density, you use FAR or FAR. My point that I was making to this board, when they're looking at how to define what's permitted, is that they should look at the other areas in your ordinance where you create a standard for density. And you do create a standard for density in low and mid-rises, you created other sections of your ordinance. Now, the colloquial we just had was, well, that's in the conditional use area, not in the permitted use area. And I think it's what Glenn indicated. But the concern I have is, there is no other standard. And so, that's when I said this board has got to make a determination. If they don't want to apply that standard, then they've got to say, all right, it doesn't apply. I don't care what, how you define density, how you define low and mid-rise elsewhere, it doesn't apply here in this zone. But you've got to say that, but you also have to recognize that elsewhere in your zoning ordinance, it does define it by density. So, if Glenn's right, and I'm not saying he's wrong, because God knows, Glenn knows the ordinance better than I do, that you don't define it at all, you just use your bulk and FAR, and that's it, the practice of this board, fine. I just brought up that elsewhere in the ordinance, it defines it. And if you define it that way, as you define it elsewhere in the ordinance, that this structure doesn't meet that standard of how you define what low and mid-rise is. And that's important, not just for the variance relief, but that's important when you look at the design standards. And when you look at the design standards, and you look in your design standards, they use the word density. They say, are you consistent with the density? So, you can't ignore it, in my opinion.
I think I understand.
Right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Do you have any other witnesses or experts?
Madam Chair, I have no other witnesses at this time. I'd like to move over, you know, all the exhibits that we introduced, you know, please into evidence, including, I don't know how we're going to mark these, but I actually have the antique artifacts that Professor Drinkwater testified to. There's four separate items. I don't know how we mark them, just...
How do you want to mark them?
I don't have a Ziploc bag, and normally we put things like that in a Ziploc. Why don't we mark it collectively as O...
25, I think? If memory serves me.
O25, very good memory. Mark it collectively as O25, and then if we could maybe dig up a Ziploc bag, we could just put that in there.
I have a lot...
Mr. Drinkwater understands that we have to retain these, correct?
I have discussed that...
Will they fit in here?
Yes, they will. I can't believe somebody on a board has a Ziploc bag. Wow!
Madam Chair, my understanding was, when you asked me to proceed in December, that I was kind of interrupting the public at that point, but you guys wanted to hear our case, so that's fine. And my understanding was, back in December, was that we were going to go back to the public now to see if anybody else, anything else did want to say.
Yes, that is correct. Do you have anything beforehand, Mr. Kelso?
No, that's correct.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Please step forward. And again, no new testimony will be heard after 10:30.
10:45.
10:45 tonight.
Yeah, no new witnesses after 10:30.
No new testimony after 10:45.
Mr. Milink, I believe you're still under oath. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Bruce Milink, Huntington Street, New Brunswick.
And I'd like to ask of the public, please do not reiterate arguments that are already on the record. Please only come up and state if you have something new to add.
I believe that what I have to say is new. There, I would like to comment, I suppose, by way of rebuttal, on certain statements that preceded, but that is not reiterated. Mr. Kelso, early on, talking about Mr. Drinkwater's testimony, asked him if there has been any move to make sites on Main Street, get them a place on the historic register, and the answer, I think, was no. My observation in that regard is that if I'm on Main Street and I see a beautiful woman, she doesn't have to have won the Miss America pageant or even been one of the contestants on the pageant to be a beautiful woman. And I think the same goes for a historic building. It doesn't have to be on the national register to be of interest as an historic site. The second point I want to make relates to Oscar Wilde's definition of a cynic. The cynic is a person, or as he put it, a man, who knows the price of everything and the value of nothing. And I think that is an important point to bear in mind in any consideration of a variance. New Brunswick has a 78-acre park, Bucklue Park. It would be a tremendous bonanza to the tax base of this city if that park were developed as a real estate site. As a matter of fact, the way the city has neglected its obligations as far as the deed of gift for that park is, it could very well become a development site if heirs to the donor should want to step forward and make a claim against the city. However, the point is, we retain and, in effect, pay for by not developing a site and getting a reduction in our taxes thereby. We retain it as a park because we value that open space. And the same goes, I think, for neighborhoods in the 6th Ward or any other ward in the city or in any other city elsewhere. There is a value to small gardens, there is a value to openness, there is a value to avoiding cheap-by-jowl congestion, and there is a value to being free of the shadow of a large building in one's own neighborhood. So, I think these are points that the board needs to consider. One is making a value judgment, and nothing, not everything is reduced to a dollar a figure. There are intangibles that make life worth living, and these have to be considered. Now, one of the interests that I have in this issue arises because of becoming acquainted with people involved in the unionized labor component. And I would say that if the board were to grant a variance, in this case, or in any other cases where large construction was involved, it should introduce the requirement that the applicant, if successful, must give an undertaking that he or she will hire at the prevailing wage rate. The unions now don't want to use the term "union rates" because that is unpopular and not politically correct, apparently. The term is the prevailing rates, so that, in other words, the idea is that the developer won't go out of town and ship in cheap labor that will take the jobs that would otherwise be taken by people who are highly qualified and would be paid at the so-called prevailing Another issue is the question of the continuing ownership of the building, any building. If this building or any other building were to get a variance, what guarantee is there that it will stay in the hands of that individual who might represent to the board that this building is going to yield thus and such in taxes? Suppose, then, subsequently, a few years down the road, the building gets sold to a religious or other tax-exempt institution, a search organization or some such thing, and then this development goes off the tax rolls? This is another consideration. So, I think that it would not be unreasonable for the board to say to the successful applicant, as a condition of getting the variance, you must undertake to hold this building, paying taxes on it for X number of years, whatever that might be. And I think that it is not unreasonable to impose such restrictions because, after all, many of us live with restrictions. I am a small landlord in New Brunswick, and I have to live with the restriction of rent control on my property. This is an issue for me because what rental income I make on it is important to me in retirement. And so, it seems to me that, as I say, if somebody is afforded a variance, they have a, and by the way, when it is a new building, when old buildings have been raised and a new building is put up, that building gets a tax exemption, freedom exemption from rent control for 30 years, presumably to allow the developer...
I don't mean to interrupt, but this board doesn't have the right to make tax exemptions or rent control issues.
I know you don't.
Okay.
But you could, I think you could say that, and you must correct me if I'm wrong, I think you could say, we are affording you a privilege, we're allowing a variance for you to put up a building that is going to be free of rent control for 30 years.
I don't believe, we don't have that jurisdiction.
No, no, that is the law.
It's not, we can't give you that as a condition of an approval. This board does not have that right.
I know you don't. I'm not saying you do. I'm saying the state law allows a new building to be exempt from rent control for 30 years.
I understand that, but it has no bearing on the decision here tonight with this board. It has nothing to do with us. Can you just move on to your next point, please?
Well, I think my point is misunderstood, but all right. Another question I have is, reference was made to the redevelopment board and the decision that it reached, which I think Mr. Kelso thought had bearing on the decision of this board. If the redevelopment board had allowed it, why wasn't this board allowed it? Whatever the justice is of that situation, I don't know. But may I ask for a clarification? Was the redevelopment board's deliberation open to the public? And if so, is there a record of the public having participated with observations or questions about the proposal before?
Mr. Patterson, do you know the answer?
Certainly, it's a public meeting, it's certainly open to the public. I couldn't say off the top of my head whether there was public there that night, and if there were, whether they had questions about it. They very well may have been, but it was absolutely a public meeting.
Okay. I'm sure that I could have spoken if I wished to.
Yes.
The other question is that, oh, the matter, the issues of the construction were already brought up by Ms. O'Neill. Who will be the owners of this building when it's built?
The applicant.
The applicant will be. There's no involvement of any tax-exempt institutions in the ownership?
No.
Okay. All right. That, then, I think takes care of what I wanted to...
Thank you. Please have a bar and a cigarette.
So, can you read right-hand, Steve, so left-hand, can we please?
Steve Ostergren, O-S-T-E-R-G-R-E-N.
And do you sort of hold two of these, Matt?
Oh, I guess I do.
Please proceed.
I'll start off by saying, I don't have a horse in the race, per se. While I don't sleep in the city of New Brunswick, I consider myself a resident here for over 30 years. Like Ms. O'Neill, I was a Rutgers student. I kind of still think myself to be a big college kid. I've never left New Brunswick. I'm a landlord in town, merchant in town. I've been on the street here, like I said, for over 30 years. And so, I have a self-interest myself. My email is, "Go RU Steve." I love Rutgers. I want to see what's best for Rutgers. And kind of what's best for Rutgers is typically, in my opinion, what's best for the city of New Brunswick, too. I think they go hand in hand. I think they need to be more hand in hand, actually, with a lot of things. So, that being said, I think the applicant's building, I'm sorry, Ms. O'Neill, you have a wonderful, charming house, and you seem like a lovely lady, I think it's great. I think the ones on Hartle Street, I think they're great. The ones on Sycamore Street, they're great. The city needs more of this. I'm a landlord. My daughter is 16 years old. She might be a tiny Rutgers in two years. Two years she might be looking for off campus. Two years, she might be looking for off-campus housing at Rutgers. And I can say, would I rather have my own daughter live in twelve Bartlett Street that got finished this past year, or one of my own, I don't even know, eighty, ninety-year-old rental houses? I would rather have my daughter in a new structure. It's well-lit. It's safe. It has sprinklers. It has people coming and going. It has private garbage collection. It looks nice. And Ms. O'Neill's house is beautiful. But for the most part, and I might jump around here. I jotted a bunch of names, a bunch of things down. She mentioned her little neighborhood. But I think the reality is, it's not nineteen fifty-seven, like Professor Drinkwater said. It's two thousand fifteen. The neighborhood changes. The city changes. The Sixth Ward is college kids. Like it or not, it's college kids. That's what this neighborhood consists of now. It's not owner-hack mudhouses anymore. It's not people working down at the Johnson-Johnson plant anymore. It's not the eighth-oldest colonial college in the country and a small, private men's college. It's a giant state institution that is growing by leaps and bounds every year and expanding. And that expanding is into the Sixth Ward. It's across the river. It's everywhere. And the city needs to realize that, accommodate that, and welcome buildings like the applicant is building, in my opinion. I'd love to build a building like that. I had a property I wanted to look at one time. Mr. Sebel, about six years ago, said, "They'll shoot me down with Top Gun." Those were his exact words. And I didn't have the guts or the money to even try to do it. So I just passed, you know? But again, my house, I can put a Band-Aid on. I can redo a bathroom. I can put Pergo down. I can put new windows in. I do all those things. I try to be a good landlord, responsible landlord. I dropped off my rent control forms today. But at the end of the day, it's lipstick on pig. It's an eighty-year-old college rental house. I think one just burnt up. One seventy-five Hamilton Street. Passed it every day, twice in the way of work. Now, if that was the applicant's building, I'm going to say, the fire ever would have engulfed the whole building. Maybe it would have engulfed where the girl left her candle, or something like that, or somebody left a pot on the stove. But it wouldn't have risked life and torched up a whole house probably in about ten minutes. That's the benefit. And as a father of a prospective student, I want new housing for my daughter or my son. It's good for Rutgers. It's good for the students. Whose neighborhood is it? It's the students' neighborhood, really. It's no longer the nice family raising their kids. That was fifty years ago. That was sixty years ago. It's not dead anymore. It's a college kids' neighborhood. What's the best for the college kids? The town and gown. A nice, new, safe, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, let the code be two thousand and sixteen, build it. Whatever the code says in that year, build it to those standards. Make it safe. I want my daughter coming out of twelve Bartlett Street with lights everywhere and lots of people coming and going. And slash cars and cameras. That's where I want my daughter to live, not in my own eighty-year-old rental house. The only thing I can do is put Band-Aids on it. Make it as nice as I can. Replace the decking. Replace some windows. But again, I'll use Professor Drinkwater's words. What's the right thing for the city's future? I think that's the board's ultimate responsibility. I'm not an expert. I don't know about parking. I don't know about ordinances. I don't care about variances. I think there are a lot of garbage that everybody hangs their hats on and wastes a lot of time over with the rule of common sense. What's the best thing for the city? It's new. It's safe. It improves the housing. I think the gentleman, Mr. Gordon, said, "Improving housing stock." Current gown's not improving housing stock. I would differ. Certainly not. Brand-new. You want to drive a new car? Or you want to drive a seventy-year-old car? I don't think English are driving seventy-year-old cars because they don't work that well anymore. They don't work that well in two thousand and fifteen. I want to buy a new car. If I can, I'm safer. It's nicer. It's flashier. So yes, the only way to really improve the housing stock in New Brunswick is to start over. I would beg the city to make it, it's only possible with Devco or with other people, to develop. Get all the property owners together. Develop whole blocks. Unfortunately, Ms. O'Neill lives next to a, I wouldn't want to live next to the big building either. I wouldn't. I wouldn't want my shade to be obstructed. I wouldn't want a big wall right next to it. They built a huge building across the street from me. I got to salt my sidewalk now more often because I don't get the sun in the afternoons. It's life. My family owns a little beach house. My neighbors, they got sandy. We have a view of a little cove. They're building it up. We won't have a view. I don't like it, but I can't do anything about it. It's America. It's their property. They can do what they want. As much as I don't like it, and I wish they would do it, they have a right to do it. And there's nothing I can say. I can, yeah, yeah, I wish they were going to build it. Barry's building up. Barry's building up. I don't got a view anymore. That's life, you know? So that's my two cents. What's good for the city is new housing. And these lots are twenty-five feet wide. They're thirty feet wide. There's no way anyone can build a totally conforming house on a twenty-five-foot lot. So are the houses going to be a hundred years old before we do something? It'll be two hundred years before the city says, "Let's change the plan and use the variances so people can redevelop this." How long? How bad will these houses get? How many students want to die in a fire at one seventy-five Hamilton Street until somebody says, "Maybe new is the better way"? That's the only way, really. Make it new. Start over. Start fresh.
Yes, can you read right-hand state name? Start your last name, could we please?
Gray Chaplin.
Can you spell that, please?
Gray, G-R-A-Y, Chaplin, J-A-C, Q-U-E, L-Y-N.
And do you swear the whole truth in this matter?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
Thanks for hearing me. I actually live on thirty-three Main Street, and I am an alumni of Rutgers University. I graduated in two thousand and thirteen. I was at the last meeting, and I heard a small point about public transportation and, you know, students not having cars. I don't have a car. I just wanted to kind of bring up the fact of public transportation in New Brunswick when you consider your, you know, decision. I, New Brunswick is a food desert. I travel at least to North Brunswick. It is an all-day trip for me to get food, for me to go pretty much anywhere. So if, I'm just, it's just a small point because we don't have a lot of time. I just want you guys to think about the state of our public transportation system when we talk about, well, a lot of students don't have cars. Well, if these students are going to live in public housing, these, not public housing, these houses, these apartments, chances are they're not going to have a meal plan. And I was an out-of-state student. I didn't have, I don't know much about my years. So I was depending on New Jersey Transit, buses, trains. And it's not as connected in New Brunswick as other cities. So to kind of push off, saying, okay, well, some people don't have cars, you know? A lot of more people are getting cars because of public transportation not being where it should be. I just wanted to bring up that small point, just as someone who has traveled, you know, a few miles away, and it's an all-day trip just to get food. So personally, I'm not for it because I don't think New Brunswick has the point where we should have these gigantic houses and buildings and say, okay, well, we're catering to students. But this city hasn't. As someone personally who hasn't, who has dealt with being a student and not having a meal plan and having to travel all day to get food. We had fresh goser. Now it's not here. If we're going to talk about, you know, students and students, we don't have a city that per se caters to students yet. So I just wanted to bring that up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I poll the public and see how many people want to speak still at this point?
I'm okay with standing at ten thirty. But I'll do what everybody else wants to do.
Are we taking a photo? Then, yeah, we're not going to hear any more testimony tonight, and we'll pick it up at the March meeting.
March tenth meeting at seven thirty PM back here in the Freeholders Meeting Room at the County Administration Building.
Motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
That's going to be over there?
Yes.